Good evening, everyone. Today is March 22, 2023. It's the Board of Education Budget Committee. We're in the North High School boardroom. And Ms. Lampier is going to be the clerk for this budget committee. Since she does such a great job with the full board, I asked her to please help me at the budget committee. Could you please take attendance?
Oh, sure. Ms. Darling?
Here.
I am here. Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Ms. Oden?
Here.
And Ms. Freeman, Mr. Claffey, and Ms. Gilio are not here. And Ms. Darling will be leaving at 7:00. So, all right, so I guess we can start. I think. Did I do it wrong? One, two, three.
Yes, we will still have a quorum after 7:00. Barely. Nobody else can leave early.
Okay, so tonight, we're going to have the superintendent present the budget, the 2024 budget in an overview. So I'm going to pass this over to Dr. Andre. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I want to start tonight just thanking our assistant superintendents, our directors, our building administrators for working with Mr. Donovan and preparing, I think, what is a very incredible, reasonable, and a responsible budget. So they've done yeoman's work behind the scenes to prepare our budget that we'll be presenting tonight and next week. So thank you for all of your efforts. It's truly incredible. So I just, as we kind of go forward and we talk about our budget, I just want to remind ourselves on why are we here? What's our district's vision and what's our academic and return on the investment? So just our district's vision is that every student will have access to great appropriate assignments, strong instruction, deep engagement, and teachers with high expectations every day in every classroom. Furthermore, every student and family is an authentic partner and should have real opportunities to shape the experiences students have in school, receive accurate and accessible information about students' progress, and have a legitimate role in decision-making. And again, I want us to remind us of our vision because that's where our budget should be directed to. And then around our PLCs, we should have the mantra of students first. Our school community, our adults are our greatest asset, and always about continuous improvement. And through having PLCs through in our community, we're focused on student learning, a focus on collaboration, and focus on results, and having those conversations and structures in place that really answers all the questions on where is our money going. So a little more on our focus on learning. So every day, we should be asking these questions. What is it we want all students to know and be able to do? How will we know if they learned it? How will we respond when they don't? And what will we do if they already know it? So again, when our adults are looking at what are the structures in place, where is our money going to? So every conversation tonight and next week should go back to what's our focus on learning? Or what's our focus on collaboration? Our teachers, our educators, our school community working together. Our budget should reflect our desire on having our adults and our students working together to drive student outcomes. And also a focus on results. Are we creating system-wide standards of content and performance? Do we have a relentless focus on the continuous improvement? So I think it's really important for us to be grounded in our PLC structures on a focus on collaboration, learning, and results to drive our budget conversations. And always have that mindset of continuous improvement. So how are we always reassessing, planning, evaluating, and moving forward? So again, what's in our budget should be always reviewed. If it's working and if it's not working, how do we remove that and invest in something else? So again, thanking the assistant superintendents to building principals, Mr. Donovan, our other directors, they've been having those questions a lot. So as we get to our numbers later, we'll see that it's a reasonable number because there has been a lot of conversations on switching positions, moving monies around that so that we could be as revenue-neutral as possible, kind of moving forward. And it was through a continuous improvement mindset. And then, as we'll hear over the next two weeks, starting tonight, what's our budget priorities? As Dr. Safdie presented a couple of weeks ago with our elementary teams for a couple of times, what's our tier-one instruction? What does our curriculum instruction and assessment look like? Working on the science of reading at the high school and the middle school, what's our portrait of a learner? Our real-world learning experiences? How do we improve our? And so just for those four, that's our tier-one instruction. How do we move this system? And I think that's really what we, when we're building a budget, how do we move systems and have systems thinking? Furthermore, in our budget, we'll talk about what's our ELL services going to look like next year? We made it a priority through this budget process to make sure that ELL is being well-supported by the positions that they need or if we have to redesign. So we are looking at making sure that whatever's in our budget proposal will be funded so that we can meet the DOJ requirements. And then lastly, our budget priorities around special education, making sure that all students who require services get what they need. So you'll be hearing that a little bit tonight and next week, but I really want to go back again, what's our district's vision? What's our four central questions? Because in every line item, it should go back to our student outcomes. So that's what you'll be hearing over the next two weeks, and then we'll sum it up again at the end of next week.
Okay, now we get into the exciting stuff.
Hold on a minute.
All right. Just put this slide in the last couple of years, just to Nashua, to glance by numbers, that we have the 18 schools. Number of students, you can see, these numbers are the October 1 numbers. So as of 2021, it was 10,138. As of 10/122, it's 9,0915. We have seen that number go down the last four or five years. If I did a chart, I think it's probably gone down about 900 students. The cost per student has gone up, obviously, because our costs, total budget has not gone down, the number of students has gone down, so the cost per student has gone up. That's a calculation that's in the DOE report that we do every fall on the previous school year. Free and reduced has stayed in the low 40s for the last number of years, been fairly consistent. ELL students, last year that was 15%. It's up to 17% now. And special ed students is about the same as a percentage. It went down a little, but the total went down, so it's about the same. Yes?
I was wondering, Mr. Donovan, before we go on to the next slide, if maybe there's been like kind of a movement to try and stop using the word "special education." So maybe if you could do maybe next year with the slides, instead of special education students, maybe put IEP students? It would be the same thing, it just wouldn't include the, you know, special, which a lot of people don't like.
Okay, that, I hadn't heard that yet, so that's new to me.
Oh, no, no, it's fine. I didn't expect everybody to know, so that's why I wanted to tell you. Thanks.
Okay. All right. Here is the colorful slide in the presentation, and it's basically a couple of pie charts showing you where we spend all our money. And it's fairly obvious, if you look at the labor, which is in blue, and the benefits, which is in, let's call it red, combined, that's about 84%, 85% of the total budget. So that's where the dollars are in this budget. It did break out some of the other significant areas like utilities, transportation, out-of-district tuition. But you can see, once you pull all those out, all other expenses is 4.23. So that's just a graphical view of where the money is spent in our school budget, which is not surprising. Okay, just to give you an idea for last year, where do the sources of funding come from? The operating budget, which is the budget that this board approves, last year was 121 million. The city then adds the benefits, the FICA, the pension on top of that, so that's what becomes the full operating budget, those two lines. We also have grants, Title I, IDEA, are the two largest ones, and there's Perkins, and Title II, and Title IV. That adds up to 12 to 13 million typically each year. Then there's the, what I listed there is the ESER Cares Funds. The total that we had from the period '21 through '25 is about 47 million. What we have remaining is about 25 million. Bonded debt, so when we're doing all these construction projects, we bond. That's the annual amount of principal and interest. Last year was 9.4 million. We also have special revenue funds, where the revenue comes in to cover the costs. So it's not an increased cost, but there's spending involved with it. The largest part of that by far is the Food Service Fund. And then the revenue that we received last year to sort of offset those costs was 45 million. The biggest piece of that number, by far above 41 million or so of that, is the adequacy aid that we get from the state. And then there's Medicare, there's some other funds that come in. But at some point, I'll give you a quick slide later on showing you exactly what that is. Okay, so usually I started off, in case people get confused, the school budget per the city, if you go to the city's book and look up the budget last year, it's 167 million. Okay? The 121 million is the amount approved by the Board of Education. The benefits are then added by the city. And then the city, what the city does do is they go in, and if there's a contract that has not been approved, it's in negotiation, et cetera, we put in an estimate of what we think we might need. The city then pulls that out. They don't put it in the operating budget, they put it on their balance sheet. So if someone says, "What was the operating budget?", it's 167 if you look at the whole thing. Okay, so this year, where the budget stands at this point is 125,430. That is an increase over last year of 3.665 million, which is a 3.01% increase. So this is the amount that when the mayor speaks or certain politicians speak about what's your increase, it's just based on sort of the Board of Ed budget prior to the benefits. Okay, so basically, the salary piece was 95.5 last year. The proposed budget has 98 million, so an increase of about 2.5 million in salaries. Little more breakdown of the salaries. Most of that total number is obviously the full wages, full-time and part-time, and then any allowances for salary increases. So you can see that's of the total increase of about 2.5 million, 2.4 of it, so to speak, is the wages. Then there's, pulled out a couple other items. Severance is about $1 million a year. Longevity. And then all the other labor accounts, which is wages per diem, additional hours, stipends, overtime, and a negative number for attrition equals the last line there. Okay, nonlabor costs, so in this budget, that number's 27.3 million. Last year was 26.1, so the increase in the nonlabor accounts is 1.170 this year. Now I'll just run through what I call significant line item additions. You do have either in your, most of you are electronic, but if you have a packet in front of you, there's a sheet here that lists all the accounts and the numbers. So if you want to take a look at that, it lists all the accounts and any changes to the account. I'm just going to run through what I defined as significant, which is about a $20,000 change. So legal services, we've been budgeting that slightly higher each year, but we've been spending a lot more than we've been budgeting. So if we think about where legal costs come from, Attorney Clausen, special education costs, Steve Bennett, and then we're involved in that state case, so there's costs associated with that. That's what most of it is this year. It's going to be about 76,000 or 80,000. We'll see what happens next year. The case is going to the court, I believe, in April. So we'll see, is that going to continue on? Is that going to stop? We'll see. But then usually, there's some other sort of legal costs that kicks up. It's just sort of the nature of the beast. Pupil support services, those are the OT and PT costs. We use outside contractors for those. Last year, it went up 100,000. Two years ago, last year it didn't go up. This year, it's going up about 100,000 again. That's based, we haven't got the contract yet from the providers, but based on initial discussions, we figure it'll be that much. Contracted services, when Mr. Smith does his presentation, he'll explain what most of that 88,000 increase, it's related to inspections and maintenance agreements, et cetera. Okay, electricity, this year, we budgeted it at 1,550, expecting to get some savings from a lot of the equipment we put in place. That hasn't necessarily shown up on the profit and loss statement, on our income statement. So we're budgeting a new number based on what Mr. Smith put together for an analysis. We do need to meet with the firm that did that work for us, and that will happen in the spring, to see if there's potentially some more savings. Maybe that number could be adjusted at some point, but for this time, we said, "Let's put it where we've been running." Heating gas has gone up. Last year, we had been budgeting most years at 1 million. We dropped it down last year a little bit. It's going to come in around 1 million again. And, you know, some of these costs, as we all know, even though we have fixed rates for the supply, there are costs related to the distribution, et cetera, that have gone up also, and that's affecting us. The next three, I won't get into too much detail because Mr. Smith will talk about those. Those are all plan operation-type increases, and he'll explain that when we get there. Other areas, telephone voice. Now I'm hoping that when Mr. Rodriguez steps up and talks about his plans for the new phone system, that Mrs. Oden will finally get her wish, and we'll actually see this line go down. This line is the same, it never goes down. We were promised it would go down with the new phone system that we put in in 2015. It never went down. So now Mr. Rodriguez is going to make the claim. Keep an eye on him, okay? Transportation services, most of this increase is due to the contract. Contract is a 3.25% increase over the previous year. That's where most of it is. We do have a little, the out-of-district tuition, transportation has gone way up when we have to use vans and things for students that go to an out-of-district, and there's only one or two students that go there, so there's a part of that. It's a little more than 3.25 in total. Educational supplies, that's an increase, and I pulled it out because it shows on this sheet. But most of the increase in there is just the way the schools did their budget. We give them an allocation each year, they budget it. They, but, a lot of them decided, "Okay, well, I don't know exactly what I want in certain areas, so I'm just going to budget more money in educational supplies." You'll see through next year, as they start to spend, they'll move some of that money between equipment and things like that. So it shows sort of as an increase in that line item, but it's really not an increase in the total budget. Other line items will be lower. Janitorial supplies, I'll let Mr. Smith talk about toilet paper all he wants. Subscriptions. Now subscriptions is up. It's mostly a curriculum-based thing. Books are down, you'll see that in a minute, subscriptions are up. So the way, we're not buying as many textbooks, we're using online information to do some of our instruction. So that's, it shows us something different, but it's really just a mix between the two. And then the last item there is security equipment. We put in our security system, or the most of it, back about probably 10, 11 years now. Those things are starting to break. We need more and more money towards that. We set up a line item, I think, a year ago, and now we're increasing it to 50,000. So of the increase, those are the large items. Okay, and then the reductions. As I talked about books, the books are less in the curriculum budget, subscriptions are higher. So indirect costs, that's the sort of the funds we get back when we manage the grants. We've had that budget at about 210,000. I moved it up to 240 because we have more grant money this year, especially in Title I. So we'll expect a bigger credit, which is a good thing in a budget. Computer equipment is down, and when Mr. Rodriguez runs through, you'll see, he's putting more money into contracted services and things like that. So his budget's about the same, just the computer equipment line, since we bought a lot through the ESER grants the last few years, is lower. And the buildings line is down to zero because we paid off the Franklin Street last year. Remember, we had some extra money, and we negotiated, got a little 25,000 off, et cetera. So that line should be zero going forward unless for some reason, a building is purchased, which I certainly don't see happening. Okay, just a few new things. There aren't lots of new things in this budget. Though we do have costs that kick up, I call it ADA 504 costs. There are students sometimes that move from the special education department into, out of that department, but there's certain, sometimes there's costs or services that are required, and special education says, "Well, we can't use the grant for that," or "We can't use our funding because that student does not have an IEP any longer." They may have a 504 or something. So this was just sort of a placeholder. I put 10,000 in. It's a place to see, okay, what are these costs really? Because right now, I just sort of find somewhere to put them, but they're put in multiple areas. So I think it's a good idea to keep track of it going forward. As far as adding staff, we added a custodian at Penachuk because of the new space that they have, increase in space. That's pretty much all we've done. We do have a significant number of staff in the ESER grant. So as we move forward over the next 12 months, you'll hear a lot more about that. But at this point in time, since a lot of people were hired, the people, a lot of the people that hired the last four years were hired into ESER. So there's no real need to add more, a lot more bodies into this budget. And what I did do last year, we had, I believe it was five assistant principals, where they had 50% of their salary was put into the Title IV grant, and 50% was in the operating budget. So last year, we moved two of them back to the operating budget full-time, moving two more this time, and I believe there's just one more left in Title IV. Because as the ESER goes away and Title IV, I think over time would suggest that we move these people back into the operating budget and not in the grant any longer. And just to give you a sense of sort of what budgets have been like since fiscal year 18, what the request was, what the Board of Alderman approved. And you can see, each year, last year was significantly higher than any other year. And this year, like I said, the request at this point in time is 3%. We'll see what happens to it over the next month or so as it goes through the process. Any questions?
No questions from anybody? Ms. Bishop?
And let me, Sean, may, Mr. Smith may be able to speak to this, but, and I know you said that you were going to be reaching out to the companies about why we're not seeing a decrease in the cost of utilities despite all of the solar panels and stuff that we've put on. So I was expecting to see a bigger decrease, but I understand the heating costs have gone up. We can all appreciate that in our own houses. But I think I was expecting to see a decrease in that line item this year. So that'll be interesting to get some more information about.
Yes, good question, and we'll get more to you.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay, so I guess we can move on to the transportation.
Okay, so I will be the acting transportation director. Please don't ask me to put your child on a bus. Basically, quick overview, areas that we'll cover, listed right there. So in partnership with First Student, we work to provide transportation for students across the city every day. Safety's a top priority for both us and our transportation provider. School buses, to this day, remain a very safe form of transportation. There are accidents that happen, but most of the time, when the car hits the bus, the car suffers, not the bus. And hopefully, the students don't, and I don't, we haven't had any significant accidents in a long time. Okay, so the budget, as I mentioned before, it's an increase of 322,000. 3.25% is the contractual increase, and we have out-of-district costs that have gone Where do we provide the transportation? To the 18 schools, we provide transportation to Clearway, and we provide transportation to the Catholic schools and the two charter schools in Nashua. That number there of 233, 382 was a rough estimate of what the cost is for the charter And that's just by law that we have to, if the student lives in Nashua and the school is in Nashua, then we need to provide busing transportation for that student. Okay, what's our standard transportation eligibility? If you live more than a mile from an elementary school, you'll get a bus, or two miles from a middle or a high school. Obviously, if you live on a major road or you need to cross a major road, then some of those students will be transferred on a bus. We also transport students who are in transition and require transportation to the school they were at. It provides less disruption for that student. And for students that have transportation written into their IEP, we would obviously provide that. The other types of transportation, we provide the high school shuttles. That's, remember when the CTE was here the other day? It's like, well, if I'm at North and the course is at South, how does that happen? That's what the shuttles do. So in between all the periods, there's a bus you can jump on and go to the other high school. We do have late buses. They're not run every single day all year long, but they're mostly for the older students that need to stay and work with their teachers to catch up on things or for various reasons. We also have some buses where we bring the CTE We also have some buses where we bring the CTE students, Evoque Ed students, to the hospital, or to the car dealership, or wherever they might have a, a training. We have summer school buses for our various summer school programs, Power Scholars, the special ed, and the ELL programs. We have the out-of-district transportation, which I mentioned, and then obviously athletics and field trips. This is if you want to get into transportation management, which you probably don't, but a route or run in a tier will test, will test us the end of the, what they are. Okay, those are just the schools and what tier they're on. Okay, out-of-district transportation, this gives you a sense of some of the schools and where they are, and how we're, we're transporting students back and forth. Some of these students are taking very short rides to maybe Hollis, and some are taking fairly long rides to like Rye, or Plymouth. But keep in mind, this is something that each student's IEP is reviewed, the agreement is made, this is the best school for that student, and most students do not, are not residential, and they go back and forth every day. So we're providing at least, the total cost there is about 600,000. That's probably going to creep higher. Just to give you an example, we had a student that we need to transport, and so we had to, went out and got a quote the other day, and it's going to be $800 a day to transport the student. So this student is, there's some, some issues that make it a little more difficult than your, your typical student, but it's still a lot of money. So if you want to start, buy a van and transport, I got some business for you. All right, vendors, First Student does all the yellow buses, and then for the out-of-district, we use Durham, we use Carrying Hand, Safe Wheels, and Gentle Care. Just the names of some of them. Student livings, living, students living in transition with McKinney-Vento, there's various rules we have to follow for, per the, that, that government law. And at this point, we are transporting students who reside in Merrimack, Manchester, Hudson, Methuen, Lowell. So we basically have to go, we bring them, bring them home and bring them to school every day. And there's also a number of students within the city of Nashua that probably get moved from, let's say, they may be a Broad Street student, but they moved somewhere else. So we'll move them within the, within the city. So there's, currently, we have over 250 students that we would define as students in transition. And as you probably heard from Mr. Rossio and anyone else, there is still a school bus driver shortage. I think this year, First Student Nashua has done a better job. We have more than we've had in a number of years, but we certainly don't have as many as we want, or that they desire. So that's a continuing issue, and we'll see how that goes year to year. Bus tickets. We do have, since high school transportation's not mandated by the state, we, years ago, charged a bus fee. It's been going off for many years, I don't know exactly when it started, but the cost has been pretty much the same for a long time. It's $65 for a full year, $32.50 for half-year. Free and reduced lunch, either receive a free or reduced pass. We have at this point over 1,700 high school students that have tickets. Now that includes those that pay the fee and those that don't. But we have about 3,000, 3,200 high school students, and so you can see how many of those actually have tickets. Do they always take the bus? Who knows? And challenges, once again, driver monitor shortage. We have fewer monitors than we do drivers. The, the district-wide special education programs, we put them in specific schools, but students that attend them come from all over the city. So just by nature, it's probably good for the education of the student, but for the transportation, it just, it's, it's a much longer route. Charter schools, that's the law, we have to follow it. They have, for the most part, worked with us on start times, but that's just a cost that we have to incur. And as, as I mentioned before, transitional students, there's a challenge with the transportation piece of that, but all in all, I think we've been handling it pretty well. And that is the end of transportation.
Does anybody have any questions on transportation? Ms. Darling?
What is the total amount of money that we get from bus holder, ticket holders?
That is probably about $80,000.
$80,000. Where does that money then go into?
That is in the revenue section, so it offsets costs.
How quickly can we get rid of it? You guys laugh, I'm serious. I don't understand how many high schools in this state charge for bus passes, but I know I didn't pay for a bus pass. I know that we can't sit there and in good conscience say that it's one of the safest modes of transportation, but we're not going to cover it because we're not mandated to? We've got to be better than that. I mean, I know $80,000 is not anything to laugh at. God knows, that's four years of my, my annual income, so I get it, but how can we get rid of it?
Well, this board would have to obviously approve that. I'd have to verify to see if the Board of Aldermen has any say in the matter. I don't know for sure, so. But keep in mind, anything you get rid of, the cost, the budget just went up, right? Okay.
Ms. Lampier?
I know what the, I was just curious with the shortage of bus drivers and all these, all these routes and all these places that they're going. I mean, are we actually able to get all these kids to school every day?
We do get them to school every day. Are they always on time perfectly? Probably not, but we, we do get them. Some of the out-of-district students, if they move, let's say, from one school to another, or if they leave the district and go, there'll be some time in between before we can set up the transportation. It's not like they're going to get it the very next day, it may take a week or two to do that. But yeah, for the, for the most part, you know, if it's a, if it's a First Student bus, they'll, they'll take someone out of the office and help drive, they'll, they'll move routes around, you know, they'll look at, at various ways that they can, you know, maybe have a driver do an extra tier.
Yeah. But that's, that's extraordinary, and it must take a lot of people working really hard to make that happen. So we're lucky to have a bus company that's willing to do that, take people out of the office and stuff. It's great.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it's a good group over there right now, so.
Ms. Brown? So I had actually a question about, as we move forward, not just the transportation, something we were discussing last night in finance, the difficulty we have finding crossing guards. We're, we continue to struggle with that. I would be interested to see, and I know it adds again to our transportation challenges, how difficult it would be to, for streets that are currently manned by crossing guards, but maybe are only serving two or three students, how easy it would be if they were, those students would be able to be picked up on their way to the last route, even though they're close enough to school, they're within the one mile or two mile radius? If it would be safer than having them walk, and easier than having, you know, paying a crossing guard 17 bucks an hour, or whatever it is, to just to have, if there was room on the bus routes? So that would be something I would be interested to see moving forward, if there was feasibility in that, and then what that would do to the bottom line of the budget.
Okay, that, I think, as I mentioned last night, I mean, until we get a director in that can really take a look at what that will do, because you're going to have to look at each bus, where those spots are. It's probably, probably a, a lot of work to do it. It's maybe not a bad idea, and, and maybe we do have a very hard time getting crossing guards. We've had that for years. So it's a potential option, but as far as getting an answer on that in the next couple months, it's probably, probably won't happen.
Thank you. Something I'd like to consider moving forward, if maybe it would be a safer option for the kids?
I want to say something, because last night, we talked about that, and we were talking about the fact that if you did it for one neighborhood, what's going to happen with other neighborhoods? And the city sometimes have to come up with a solution, because we used to have safe walking streets. And somehow, that fizzled, because it would be like, they paved out an area for the students to walk, and a lot of it was, I think, at Main Dunstable School that they did it. I know that at Penachuk, they have lights now to stop. That might be an option in, in the higher traffic areas, because I know in West Hollis Street, we have the charter school right by where I am, and the cars can't get in and out. So, and I've said, when they expanded the charter school, this is what we needed, it went on deaf ears with the planning board and also with my Aldermen. I'll probably get yelled at again because I mentioned something. I'm not mentioning the name, I'm not mentioning which, what I live in, but I said West Hollis Street, so I guess you can guess where I am. But I, I look at it, and I hear also Ms. Darling's concern about bus passes. I know, I grew up in New York, and we didn't have buses. We had to either walk or take the city transportation, and we had to pay for that. And I think you're opening up sometimes a can of worms that we might not be able to afford. Because of the fact that you've got to look at how much more the taxes are going to go up, it's going to be a bottom-line hit. Student enrollment is going down, and people are already saying, if the enrollment is going down, it's, the cost is going up. So you've got to weigh that, and there might be other solutions other than a bus, on what we can do with the city, in those high-traffic areas, maybe, you know, just when kids are crossing, they can push a button on a light. I mean, that costs money too, but there are, there might be other options. Because this is a contract too, that you're going to have to add more buses, and the fuel, and I mean, you're going to have to really start thinking about, can we put on more buses? And so I think this is a further discussion rather than a budget tonight. That's just my opinion, because we started last night. Anybody have any other questions on transportation? No?
Mine's not a question, but since I'm leaving in 10 minutes, and this is kind of the, like, perfect opportunity for it, I want to give like a shout-out to a crossing guard that's right outside of Fairgrounds Middle School, and she also does sell, and I don't know if any of you guys ever drive around there. She has the biggest smile on her face twice a day. She is a ray of sunshine. She waves to people, she actually directs traffic, which is good, because there's a fence in the way, and I'm constantly afraid I'm going to get hit. And since Ms. Lampier was so good about bringing up a positive remark, I also wanted to give a shout-out to this crossing walk, crossing guard, whose name I don't actually know, but she deserves flowers.
Nice to hear.
Okay, so now, we're moving on, I guess, to plant operation? That's the next one in our packet?
No, I think.
What are we doing?
Technology.
Technology? Okay, so my packet goes backwards. Okay, so Mr. Rodriguez, the floor is yours.
Yep, I'm just setting it up for you, Greg. I'm your IT guy.
My IT guy went in trouble.
Yeah, you're right.
Thank you for keeping the seat warm. Hi, everybody. Greg Rodriguez, Director of Technology. Welcome, or, well, thanks for having me, I should say, so. All right, so I'm going to present the technologies budget for fiscal year '24. As you can see, we have quite a large staff. This is, you know, we have less students, however, the amount of devices, as I was sharing with Ms. Oden before the meeting, was, has grown exponentially since, even before COVID, and when I started on the district in 2016. So with more devices, that means more people to support technology. So we're, we are, we're growing as a district tech-wise, and hopefully, you know, we can sustain our growth as a department. All right, so, you know, the Department of Technology, we, we, our goal is to improve our security posture, protect students, faculty, and staff. So that's kind of like really my strong initiative this year, we, we have to do better. We look at security not just as an IT security, but as a physical security, as, and increase our privacy. This is going to be through, and it's going to reflect through the presentation. You know, we're going to, just a phone system alone, as, as Mr. Donovan has spoken about, is going to, you know, hopefully bring us leaps and bounds better as, just to increase our security posture and safety in the district, so. Working, you know, our technology isn't just for computers and stuff like that, it's also to promote learning in the classroom. So technology has now, you know, it touches everything and everybody within the district. So we work with our building administrators in a collaborative effort, also with the other directors and assistant superintendents, and chief operating officer, and Mr., and Dr. Androids. So, yeah, this is what we do, and we want to, we want to be better for, for everybody, so. It's not to say we have our mishaps, because we do, it's technology, nobody's perfect, so, but we try to fix it as quickly as possible. So what we're really going to focus on for rational for this budget is safety, security, and privacy. Through contract services, we're going to, still performing some high-level network, networking contracts to, to, one, the core switch at North, five core switches at three elementary schools in Penachuk and Fairgrounds Middle School. Our computer software just always goes up, so that's just a licensing increase. Everything is subscription-based now, especially when we're moving to cloud-based solutions, so more of a software-as-a-service. And these are just expected to go up every year. Hopefully, our new softwares will improve our safeguards for security, safety, and privacy. The network upgrades will include the end-of-life core switches at six schools, and, let's see, phone system upgrade. The phone system upgrade's going to be a huge part of our, our summer. And we, we expect to see some significant improvement, significant improvements, you know, moving forward with our phone system, and the capabilities that we'll have moving forward with, just not a classroom phone that's an analog, old-school touch thing. It's actually going to be on their desk, phone similar to what we actually have right there, but actually a little bit fancier. It's kind of weird this year, I usually bring props with me, but I don't have any props with me this year, so I feel like, no Gallagher, I'm sorry, Dan, so. We have a slight increase in the operating budget for technology from last year, so not, I don't think we're breaking the bank too much, to Mr. Donovan's delight. All right, so our recent IT improvements, so all split pair cabling is gone as of February break, so in past budget, budget presentations, our network cables, which are these right here. Uh-oh. See, I fixed it, I created the problem, and I fixed it. All split pair cabling is gone. So what split pair cabling is, is that one of these wires are actually two, we made two different connections, so we could hook up two computers to, to one wire. As a result, that's not a good thing, because you lose out speed, connectivity, and, my phone is right there.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Everybody check your phones.
Oh, oh, it was Mr.? Hmm. Thank you. So we've gotten rid of all that. As, as of February break, District Office was finally taking care of it, the split pair cabling. That's huge, because that was really the beginning of what we can do with our phone project, because we can't run our phones off of two connections with one wire. It's just, it's a, you just can't do it unless you plug it in, and even so, they require a certain level of speeds, and one split pair just wouldn't give us that, so. FMS and PMS are now fully upgraded and online, that's with all, that has to do with the construction that was done the previous two years or so, something like that, yeah. So we've also saved on costs with downgrading our internet from 5 gigabits to 5 gigabits from 8 gigabits per second. So we did a, we, we saw what we, our metrics were for quite a few months, not during the summer months, because really, nobody's here to do. because really nobody's here to do that. And we were pegging four at our highest moments, but five is a really comfortable range that we feel that we're, we can, we can be and not really anybody would see any performance issues with that. So we have a new report card with a straightened seclusion form. Franklin Street is a continuous work with coordination with plant operations. And that's just an ongoing thing that, you know, we work with them just to make sure the upgrades and we just network and whatever they're doing over there. So we upgraded all our fiber panels within all the schools too. So our fiber was about 20 years old. That's since been upgraded to, I know this is probably going to not mean much, but OM3 fiber, which is good. Yeah, I know. Ms. Bishop, you love that, right? Fascinating stuff. Our upcoming projects, the phone project, our core switches in six schools. We're looking for multi-factor authentication. So this is part of this safety and security for the districts. We've, as many of you have you know, have known and some of you have been victims of impersonations with your accounts. And we, and through multi-factor authentication, this will greatly reduce, if not eliminate, our impersonation for accounts because it requires at least two ways of authenticating to a device or a computer or device by using a smartphone, a token, whatever, to actually get into your account. Some of them, how it goes is, without getting too technical, your password is one and something else is another, like something you, like a biometric, like you have a face ID. I don't think we're going to use that, but, you know, or an SMS text. So those, that's just a two, two-way. So when you use that through Cisco Duo. This also is part of insurance plans. So let's say, you know, the unfortunate event that we are breached as a district, they look at what we do, what we have already in place as safeguards. And if we don't have a certain things that we check off, we may not be covered for, for insurance, you know, for cyber insurance. So we're also enhancing our email security with Barracuda and Microsoft. That's going to be like, I think it's called Barracuda Advanced Threat Protection. And that's also helping with impersonating accounts as well. We're streamlining our access through clever, really leaning into clever with our single sign-on and hopefully making like a window for everybody to sign in. So it would be like a one-stop shop as opposed to going to multiple different windows. We're doing our file migration. So any user who has files already, you know, in our shared folders within the district, they will be able to access that through Google. And we're going to push people to start using Google File, Google Drive as part of their files instead of saving it within district, which would hopefully eliminate the needed cause, the need for having like our servers for storage in the district. So, you know, that would also reduce costs in the long run after we have those files go away and keep them in the cloud. JS SBC Fiber Project, so that is going to be starting this summer. It's going to be run from South High School to the Brian McCarthy Middle School in Buck Meadow. And we've already had an RFP go well and we had some bids coming through. So, and this is an E-ratable project for the most part. We have to work in conjunction with FIRE for C-Wire and alarm. So that part isn't covered under E-rate, so there's no discount applied to there. But there is from the fiber run from South to Buck Meadow. So our district will be connected even at the new, at the new middle school. Looking through account automations, this will help, this is going to be working with HR and business office as well to, for accounts and people coming in and personnel. So this is actually going to impact, you know, the, the operation side of, of things when new users come aboard and even when they leave. So it'll actually streamline the process much better. What? It's actually XDAD. You like XDAD? Okay. We'll call it XDAD for Mr. Donovan, all right? We're actually moving to an inventory system through Incident IQ. Right now, we have School Dude, which we found out they don't really have, they don't really do inventorying anymore. So we had to move to Incident IQ and actually, it's actually a pretty slick system. I won't go too much into it, but it's, it's cool to us. All right, now we get to the meat of it. So 2016, this is my first year that I started in the district was 2016. And I remember Mr. Farron Koff, the late Mr. Farron Koff, who showed us the bonded project for this entire phone system. And it was, I don't know, $2 million? Yeah, yeah. Now it's time to upgrade that. I can't even believe that was almost seven years ago that we were looking into this project or that, that project started. But those, that equipment has since become end of life. So instead of upgrading the equipment and then being in the same spot a few years from now, we're actually moving towards a cloud-based solutions with Cisco WebEx. So if we were to go and purchase the appliances for this, which are, it's actually just equipment and appliances, just our fancy way of saying things, it's $208,000. And that's what, that's, that's including labor, replacement for everything. And right now, our current phone system isn't top-notch. But when we move to more of a WebEx and a, and that type of software as a server, platform as a service, this will give us way more features and fun things that everybody, every staffer in the district can use. So we're looking to have phones in every classroom, office and common space. We don't currently have that. The only school that actually has, only three schools that, well, I guess four are the middle schools now, that, the only elementary school with phones in every classroom is Amherst because they were the first school to get rid of the split pair wiring. Going back to the split pair again because it's important. So with, with the phones in every classroom, this will allow us to have, be compliant with Carrie's Law and Ray-Bomb's Act. So Carrie's Law, which we already are complying, you dial 911 from any phone, it'll automatically go to, to the dispatch. And without dialing seven or nine or anything like that in front of it, 911, it has to go straight to dispatch. So, and Ray-Bomb's Act is actually the GPS location of that phone call. So let's say somebody is calling, is using 911. That, that phone, that phone right there would tell the law enforcement or first responders exactly where we are. So they know exactly where the emergency is. This gives us this capability with, we have a phone in every classroom. So that just instantly increases our safety and security posture in the district. So with the phone upgrade, it's going to give us an optional softphone. A softphone is a application you can, optional, to install on your actual cell phone. And you're able to make calls as you were in your office phone. And that, that's, that just gives us that capability to do that. So, and it'll be like if we actually are making a call from our office phone, but on our, on our actual cell phone. So if internet goes down, the softphone client on the phone will work and we can still make and receive calls as a district, you know, moving forward. It'll actually use through cellular that we can do that. So all text messaging is auditable. So let's say a coach is messaging students in a completely appropriate way or inappropriate way. We can do that because it has that messaging capability. So if a coach is messaging his, his or her athletes, that we can, we can see that and, and figure out if some nefarious things are going on. So we're also going to look into WebEx video conferencing, which is going to be replaced by Zoom just because it's going to be like a package deal and WebEx offers the same thing. And it's actually pretty much the same interface that we see. It's really not much different. It's not that different. So, and it's also much easier for us to interface and like manage the interface because our current phone system right now and how it's managed is a bear. So this is actually going to cut down on our contract costs that we use for managed services. Our phone upgrade, so our annual cloud licensing is going to be roughly $48,500. Call Tower, which is going to replace our Comcast phone services is, that's also an annual price of $29,000, which is much lower than our Comcast, you know, cost per, per year. Our upgrade configurations is a one-time cost. So we actually, the company is, the company we work with is going to provide services to help us stand this up because this is a huge project to undertake. So, and we don't have the technical expertise in our department to do this fully in the time span we're looking to do. Our phone purchases for, for every classroom, every common space is $81,400. And the WebEx is what I was talking about before. That's going to be roughly $10,000. So, and the migration and configuration is going to be $5,000. So we're also, this is a part that I just, I want to let you all know. We're also looking into a single-wire emergency system. So Assistant Director of Security, Mr. Lassard, I and Dr. Andrew have spoken about this and what, and what we want to do to increase security in, in the district. Single wire is, is, they have a product called InformaCast. And this is a mass emergency notification system. So let's say there's an active shooter if, and there is an active shooter within district, everybody will know immediately and what to do, where it is, you know, shelter in place, to do whatever. It goes through anthrax, fires, all those things. And it's a massive, and with this also will give us the opportunity to have a panic button on the phones on our desks. So if something's going on in the classroom, the student, the, the teacher or staff will have the ability to hit the panic button. Emergency is, the emergency notification is sent to, you know, the first responders or FIRE or whatever to, you know, respond to the actual panic button being signaled. So there will be not, there won't be, be a need for physical panic buttons anymore because they will have the ability to have it on their phone, softphone and computer. So we, yes. Ms. Mann?
Does that panic button just go directly to police or is it something that goes to the office? So for instance, there was a student that was having an outburst that was maybe causing danger to the classroom because there's something that's sent to the main office or does it go directly to the police department?
We can, we can configure that and how we want that to be. So it's going to be a configurable option that we can do. So with those cases, it's better to be safe than sorry. And that's something that, you know, if we do go forward with this and Mr. Lassard and I and, you know, in my team, we'd work to, you know, to make, to tune it. It's not, we don't think, you know, it would take some time. So let's say like a panic button is issued and we're in our first month of standing it up and we're like, okay, we're a little too sensitive with this. We can adjust. So that's, that's, that's a good thing. We will be able to adjust what we need to, to make it work for everybody. All right, I'm done talking about phones for a little bit. So we're going to go into phase four of our network infrastructure upgrade. So this is, we're going to be upgrading our core switches at Fairgrounds in Penachuck, also three elementary schools and also our North Core Switch. So our North Core Switch is, has reached end of life. That's our big one that's here. And since the building is so big, it's our, it's our second largest core switch we have besides South. So that's the support of the devices with wireless and wired internet. So these are things that, one, one, these are projects, this project is E-ratable. So there is a 60% discount rate that we are going to see from, from doing this project. So that's a part of the FCC. All right, information overall security. So I just, I just want to, I think when people think about information security, they look at it as information technology. They're actually kind of different. So they, like information technology is how we run these. Information security is how we protect you. So while we do do a lot of things to impact you as, you know, with information technology, our primary focus and how we think of these things is focused around information security. So security for us influences every decision that we make as a district, at least in our department to, because we want to make sure students are safe, staff is safe and the information stays within district. So the digital phones on teachers' desk, again, improve security. That's physical security. That's, that's safety that we're trying to promote. The, the single wire and InformaCast is part of the phone project. It's an emergency alert system. It's configurable. We're also looking at multi-factor authentication through Cisco Duo. That's what we talked about before, a couple of things. That's, you know, what you know as a password and some other, you know, some other authenticator. So, and also our email security upgrade. So the email security is huge because if, let's just say somebody gains access to, you know, Mr. Donovan or Dr. Andrew's accounts, they could do some serious damage, especially because their email accounts alone carry a lot of weight and they can request things that we just may not know. So these will hopefully limit, if not eliminate, our threat vector. Here's our software budget. Does everybody want me to read line by line? Or are we okay with just, no? Okay, I think, I think we can just look at it. So that's going to be $761,775, a nice round amount. We've, just like any, any year, our cost to do, to do business with software goes up. We've brought in some new software. We always have to keep a little bit in the miscellaneous category just in case something does come up. And let's say like the, our budgeted number is not, does not meet that. So we always have to build in just a tad bit of cushion just in case some of these things don't really work out the way they do. I know workday has gone up for a couple of thousand from last year. So these are the things we're just experiencing year after year. Our contract services, so we have HP, which is our storage system. Our Cisco Support contracts is what we, who, who helps us with our, our networking and high-level projects. Our phone upgrades, that's, that's, we estimate it's going to be around $200,000. We still have wiring, E-rate, Aspen updates, which are coming more and more. And we do rely on those to maintain our, one, the, a safe student information system because they do have to upgrade and do their software patches as well to ensure that, you know, whatever happens stays with us again. So we, and just like any application, it can be exploited. So that's what they do. All right, computer equipment. So we are going to purchase $235,000 worth of Chromebooks. So that's the, that, that number's about $200 per Chromebook and $35 for licensing costs. So that was as of last month. Those do change month to month. So our quote we get is usually good for 30 days. So working with Mr. Poska and the new director, a new coordinator of digital learning, Ms. Smith, where we really, I want to support them and make sure that our Chromebooks are going to be ready for them for the students and the, and the staff at, at secondary, at the secondary level. So you'll notice that we are not purchasing a lot of desktops this year, only 20 spares. This is because the cost of desktops has gone up significantly. When, I think I presented a few years ago, it was right around $400 per desktop. Now we're looking at $650 plus. This has to do with the chips. So when, when the chip, when the chip manufacturing levels out, hopefully the cost of, of purchasing desktops will, will, will lower as well. So I'm hoping by next year, we're going to be purchasing more desktops replacing the classrooms. We're going to be also purchasing $6,000 worth of monitors. We're going to be moving our monitors to a 22-inch monitor instead of a 19-inch monitor just because if, if we look at monitors now, they're just not big enough. And 22 is a good size, but not like too big. So these Chromebook numbers are for, we, what we expect for the 2024 school year. So the, this is going to be the anticipated enrollment that we see. So Elm is going to be at 957 Chromebook count. To Mr. Poska's credit, they have done a great job of purchasing a lot of Chromebooks to their school. When, when he was at Elm and we, we had to have some candid conversations over the summer about this. And what we, what we want to do is make sure that we have about 120% of our inventory to support one-to-one for the secondary level. So not just, so that would be the student enrollment of 957, 20, 120% of that. So the 20% that would be saved there would be for damages, both intentional, non-intentional. Sometimes devices just stop working. So we want to make sure that we have a, a supply for the students if something does happen. So this total is about 600 or so devices to purchase, that will be left over, that will be purchased for the secondary and 400 will be evenly dispersed at the elementary levels based on population and Chromebook count. So this is what we are anticipating to see. This is what we have currently in our schools right now. So, and this number is as of yesterday. Yes?
What's the asterisk next to the 40 in PMS?
Yeah, so since they already have the, I should have explained that, my bad. So since they already have 120 over, I still wanted to put some more, a few more Chromebooks into the school. So that, that was just an intentional thing to put in there because, you know, as we know, enrollment numbers do go up and down. If they do go up, we'll, Penachuck will be okay. So that's, that's why. So that's, that's why.
Thank you.
Yep. Summer help. So we are going to be hiring one intern this year and this is, this person's going to work with the digital coordinator and us so we can be fully prepared for the one-to-one rollout come the fall. So that is the entire responsibility of that position that we're going to hire over the summer. We're also, we also are going to increase, I should, I should have corrected, that's going to be the same as last year. So five days times 40 hours. This is for Jennifer Campo, who works as a tech integrator for the high schools. So she helps a lot out with our summer orientation for our planning in our office. So that's usually, she usually does more than that, but she said 40 hours is good. So we said, okay. Priorities moving forward, meeting the IT security needs of the district. The school districts are becoming more and more of a target. It's, I feel like right now, it's not a matter of if, but when. There's, there will be something that's going to happen. Recent breaches with, I just Googled this yesterday. Recent breaches within the past week include Minneapolis, LA, Denver Public Schools, you know, on Alaska, you know Alaska, I don't know. I know, I know, as I said, I just Googled this yesterday and so on. So these, these, it's, it's, this is why I think it's important that we do these things like multi-factor authentication and increase our email security presence because it's, it costs a lot less to keep the milk in the cup as opposed to picking it up. So, and you don't want to see this face on the front of, you know, a Nashua newspaper. Not good, not good. So we're also going to, we have another security audit. This is a biannual thing. So we had it done two years ago and we're going to do another one this fall. So this is a vulnerability and penetration testing audit that we do. And the company we use is fantastic to provide us a full report. They've even worked with Mr. Lassard on physical and perimeter security, just to see how we do with that. And it's just really, it's important that we do this stuff to, again, safety, security and privacy for the district. So with the new digital coordinator, we want to bridge the gap between curriculum technology and we want to look at how technology and its, how, and its impact on learning, future-ready initiatives. Dr. Andrade could probably speak a little bit more when, whenever ready for the future-ready stuff. Professional development, technology refresh cycle and a, you know, and a budget moving forward. So items not being funded, repairing older projectors for the time being. We, we're hoping that, you know, through construction funds and we can outfit classes as we go along. So that's, we've, we've done a good job with Fairgrounds and Penachuk without fitting projectors in every classroom, but we could do better in, in how we use AV in the classrooms. So questions?
Ms. Bishop?
With the Chromebooks, do they come with the Chromebook carts? I see people asking for donations for them. Is that something that's worked into?
So with the Chromebook carts, they really won't be that necessary in the high schools because, and even the middle schools, because from moving one-to-one, we already have the, they'll, they'll be taking the Chromebooks out of the carts and actually giving to the students. So we're going to have a lot of carts with not so much Chromebooks inside of them. So I, I would strongly urge against teachers and others to, to ask for Chromebook carts in the future, so.
And then in regards to email security, are you guaranteeing that nobody is going to pretend that I'm asking them for gift cards anymore?
As soon, as soon as I guarantee something, Ms. Bishop, the sooner I give a foot in my mouth, so.
I feel like I get the, the email from Jess first. She's like, it happened again. And then I have to quote Mean Girls and be like, why are they so obsessed with me?
Well, you're like, so it's actually called whaling. So you're, you're considered a big efficiency, the board president. So, yeah, yeah, it's, yeah.
So at my real job, we have to do security trainings all the time because obviously it's HIPAA and they don't want people getting into medical records. But we have trainings all the time about how not to be dumb on the internet.
Right.
And I'm constantly being texted, Jennifer, you have to do that training again because I click on some email that I'm not supposed to. And then I have to go back and do a training about reading email names properly.
Well, this is, this is.
Are we going to be doing that? Because I have been shamed into much better internet safety.
Yeah, professional development with email security or email awareness is something that we definitely do need to address.
Like Netflix with an extra X.com is not really asking you to update your password.
That's not, yeah, that's not what we, you shouldn't be clicking on that.
I'm, I'm so busy. I'm just like, what can I do, Pat?
Yeah.
My boss says the same thing.
But, but, but with the, with the Barracuda and the Microsoft upgrades through the, you know, through the backend, users won't really see a difference.
Yeah.
We, we will in terms of what they receive. So if, if an email comes through or it tries to go through and it's like, this is a risk, we're going to, we're going to flag this. It's going to be deleted, found, you know, found and deleted out of people's inboxes without anybody even knowing. And if something comes, does come through, we'll investigate it and, and, you know, and pull it out of people's mailboxes. So it doesn't propagate and go forward because I've been a part of some, some of those and when I was in my previous district and what a nightmare of a day or a couple of days because it, they store passwords and then it just spreads like that because they send out all the same phishing emails.
Right.
Yep.
Now, when I see emails coming from you, I say.
I never need help. I never will ask for help. I think it is against my nature to ask for it. You will never get that email from me.
Ms. Johnson, just don't click on any Netflix stuff from.
I don't even do any Netflix. I told my husband a long time when he crashed a computer, if you don't know who it's from, don't open it. You cause me problems.
Your husband's a smart guy.
And don't click on.
I'm a smart woman.
Okay.
I tell him not to do it.
You are a smart woman.
Let's get that clear right now. I've got a question. Going back to the phase four of the network infrastructure upgrade.
Yep.
Course switches, middle school upgrade. We're doing that? We didn't have it done when we were.
So we're not, yeah, we're not big on replacing items that don't, are end of life yet. So that was the thing. So they weren't end of life last year. And since these are so expensive and we don't, we only want to replace them when they are end of life, they're usually around five to seven years. We didn't want to replace something that wasn't coming out yet. So, and since those are E-rated, E-ratable as well, there's an audit process that if we're replacing items too soon, it, it, you don't want to, yeah, yeah, it's, it's, we just got to be careful when we're working with the feds with stuff like that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Any other questions?
The, just the WebEx, the, replacing the Zoom with the WebEx, is that the one where it's constantly in the background where you have like the ability to chat with other people? You can click into, I mean, like instant connection with video conferencing?
It has, it has a capability. It's, I, if you close your, if you do this.
Yeah.
You would swear it's Zoom. It's, yeah.
Well, we, I mean, again, we've also upgraded to it and it's, it's actually much better. I don't have, I don't get the little circly thing all the time.
Right, yeah.
I'm super technologically.
That's what they actually said in the presentation. We said, we're eliminating the circly things, so.
Was that really?
Yes.
The circle of death, yes. I can find that anywhere.
Yeah, it's a technical term, yeah. The Cisco WebEx, the, especially the, the collaboration part of it, when I say collaboration, I mean like video conferencing.
Mm-hmm.
So that's, that's actually going to be, I don't think we're going to get rid of it anytime soon, so.
Oh, no, I think it's great.
Yeah, it's, it's a good feature and we use it. So I, I think if, even though we have Zoom right now, I think it'll be an easy transition for people to move from Zoom to WebEx. And, and we're, we're trying to not use like a software here, a software there. If we're going to.
Right, be consistent.
Cisco, we're going to be consistent. We're going to bring, we're going to use Cisco products and that, you know, that includes WebEx, that includes our Cisco Duo for our multi-factor authentication. So they're built, they're layered on top of each other.
And all of the equipment that's provided for staff and for students, maybe not necessarily students, but they have the ability within the device to do audio and video?
Can you just, can you repeat that? I'm, I'm not sure I.
Like my computer is so old that I have this thing that I click onto the top of it and it becomes a camera where all of the people who are more important than me have it right on their monitor, like in there.
Oh, like.
So if people wanted to do remote working.
Yep.
They can bring home their equipment.
Yep.
And then participate in whatever meetings are happening without needing extra.
Device or equipment, right?
Right.
Yep, that, that is an option. That's, although some, let's say they have a desktop at home, they don't have a webcam. They, it would be pretty tough. They could, but they could use their cell phone to, to use.
That's what I was doing at home the whole COVID time because my thing kept glitching out.
Even if you have your cell phone.
Getting glitchy like the kids say, right?
So with the cell phone, you can also, you, let's say you have your, your cell phone with the WebEx client on it, the, the application. You can make and receive calls and call other extension as though you're actually in district. So if you wanted to reach out to a parent, you wanted to use your cell phone with the WebEx client on it, it'll come off as a Nashua School District number. It looks just like you would see like on an iPhone or an Android, so.
Right. And you can turn it on and off according to your workday.
A hundred percent, yes, yes. So these are all configurable things. And for us, it's actually going to be way easier to manage because it is, our current phone system is extremely complicated to manage on the backend, so.
Awesome. Thank, that's all I have. Fascinated by the stuff I don't know.
Ms. Brown?
I have two questions. One, just to clarify for anybody who's kind of maybe in between. So the goal is next school year to have all of the high school students with a laptop that they can take home.
Yep.
And then middle school also or little, middle schools still?
Yes.
Deciding, yes, both?
Yep.
Okay, that's fantastic news, good to hear. And my other question is actually, and I don't know if it's, would be you or Mr. Smith, but you're both here and you're talking about security and connectivity and things. I think here in North, recently, there's been a series of power outages or internet outages and that kind of thing. Can you kind of say what's that related to? Is there something that we need to do network-wise? I, I don't know.
So if, if there's power outages in certain spots of the building or just building wide, that does directly impact our, our ability to connect to the internet just because everything runs off of power. We have, it's called the UPS or uninterrupted power supply. That's not in lieu of a generator. That's just a battery so we can safely shut down our networking and our storage unit. So if those aren't powered down correctly, it's like pulling the plug on a computer. It's going to be like, what are you doing? It's called, it's a bad interrupt. So you don't want to, we don't do that. So I can't speak to the power stuff. I, that's, that's more your expertise, Mr. Smith. So I can say on the, we usually experience outages like that when there's, when there is a power interruption or a surge. So, yep.
Thank you. Ms. Oden?
Thank you. This is not, not so much a question, but I want to take this opportunity to thank you. I know for many years I've been saying, can we make sure students change their passwords during the year? I guess because I hear so much about it at home. And I want to thank you because you made that possible, you and your team. So I, I want to thank you. Also, you said you've been here seven years.
It started seven years ago. I left her a year and a half.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
How many, oh, we have a lot more.
Devices?
Devices, yeah.
Yeah.
How many people do you have on your staff?
I, I supervise 17.
17?
Yeah.
When you came here, how many did you supervise?
Thirteen, thirteen when I, when I became, well, as assistant director slash director when Mr. Farron.
When work was here, still here.
Yeah, yeah, so that was four, four years ago.
Okay.
Roughly four years ago, we had 13.
And, and we have a lot more devices?
Have a lot more devices.
And you don't have a lot more people on your staff, only?
Right. So two of those, two of those positions are actually on the application side of things. So they, one of them is helping with state reporting just because state reporting is such a, a bear. So one of, so that we hired a person for the state reporting side and then another for data, like a database administrator. Because we, since we have our, as the, the services that we do, we don't purchase as many textbooks, we actually purchase more software. So we have to integrate that software and support, support it in a way after to make sure it's, it's still working. So those are two big things that, just on the application side, we don't actually touch physical computers to, I did it again, I'm going to break this thing. There we go, all right. I know, I got to stop doing it. But those, but those are the two positions there. And then we have two other S R positions that we hired for the, to support the middle schools because there are so many more devices just at the middle schools alone. I, I wanted an assistant systems administrator at each middle school along with each high school to support the amount of devices and students at those locations. So those are the needs I felt we needed, you know, just even seven years ago because we, even though we didn't have as many devices then, we have exponentially more devices now. I think we had 2,500 Chromebooks back in 2016. Now we have, we're going to be around 12,000, just, just Chromebooks alone coming this fall. And our computers, you know, just computers, phones alone. So if you, I did a breakdown minus phones, per technician, we, they manage close to 1,800 devices for one, one assistant systems administrator. The average is 250 to 300. So, yeah.
Wow.
That's just, just to put that into perspective.
I want to thank you and your team so much. Having sat on this board for a few years, I can remember board members saying, why are we buying textbooks? It'd be a lot cheaper to get technology. I'm not sure.
I'm not sure either.
I'm not sure that's, that's the case when I look at the numbers. But I want to thank you and your staff because it certainly is critical.
Yep.
In education and thank you for keeping the frustration level down with our educators and our administrators.
I'll, I'll say we certainly aren't perfect, but we, we, we tried to do pretty good, so.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Bishop?
Just in regards to the Chromebooks and going with the students, I know one of the concerns we had when we started rolling out the one-to-one or even just providing the Chromebooks for the students was their ability to keep them, keep them well. But since then, we've offered up the insurance on the computers for the kids taking at home for the one-to-one. Are they still going to be asked to do the insurance fee on it?
Yes, yeah. Just because there are incidentals that.
Right.
It's just going to have, it's inevitable.
And are we, sorry, go ahead.
So we did experience a lot of that during when we went remote. There was quite a bit of damages. We saw just damages, damages and loss alone was around 18 to 20%. So that's, that's why I anticipated the building at 20%, like buffer zone for every, every school and every location, so.
And then the insurance, we're finding they're able to fix the computers, get us new, or Chromebooks, get us new Chromebooks, like it's, it's a workable process. It's not like.
Yeah, we're, that's, that's, this is, we aren't, we aren't the first district to do it. This is, yeah, so.
One of the last, I think.
But there will be growing pains with us. Like I, I, I don't expect perfection, but we, you know, and I, but I think we have a pretty decent team, you know, to, you know, not just in technology, but I would say just working with, you know, you know, Mr. Poska and, and new digital coordinator. It's, we're, we're going to try to do the best possible, the best, you know, best way possible to make sure that this is a successful rollout.
I think it will be. And I, I think, you know, being realistic about giving middle schoolers Chromebooks when they won't even wear real shoes or jackets to school. So I think, I think we're actually looking pretty good as a district in how everybody's handling the technology. So I, I think it's a great opportunity that we have here, so thank you.
Mr. Castellano?
Did I say, did I say your name right?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Castellano, yep. Yeah, so I also wanted to thank you and then I just wanted to, and I'm sure you guys are taking this into consideration, but like in a lot of my classes, students bring like their own devices anyway. So I know it's important for the schools to be like one-to-one or whatever, but also like a lot of students already bring their own devices. So in reality, I think we're probably close to that and I'm sure you guys take that into[1760.04] And I'm sure you guys take that into consideration as well.
We encourage people to bring their own devices and computers. It's.
Right.
Yeah, we want that. It only, it only helps our, you know, our reach with technology, so.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you very much.
All right. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you. Now we're going to have Mr. Smith with Plan Operations.
Arrow to move.
The red arrow, okay. Okay. Thank you very much. Good evening. I'm Sean Smith, the Plan Operations Director. Technology is a wonderful thing. I mean, Greg's department takes care of my department as well. Our security systems rely upon it. Our inventorying systems, work order systems. We keep track of keys. It's all software, all computer driven. So it's, they do a great job. It gets me in trouble every now and then, huh? I received an email from my boss the other day, and here's, here's the budget for the next year. So I get out, open it up, and it showed all the lines and had a column, and I, I print it out. I look at the column and I was not happy. And I told, I, I was very unkind. I told him I was not happy with what he did to all my, to my budget. And he left me a voicemail in return and said, Sean, slide over to the other side of the page. There were, there were three more columns that were off my page. I didn't stop and think of that. Whenever I open an email, I go straight up and down. If it's a long email, you go down, down, down. Rarely do I have to go left or right. I apologize. I shouldn't have said some things I did. But that's technology. So this is the budget overview for Plan Operations for the coming fiscal year. To remind you what we do, we repair and maintain all the building systems and the components. We do all the cleaning of the buildings. We maintain the school grounds, which include the playgrounds, sports fields, and courts. Safety and security is a big portion of what we do. And also includes crossing guards, which you've talked about already tonight. And last but not least, it's construction and renovation planning and oversight, which takes up a lot of my time. And I do share the load with my assistant directors in their various areas of specialty. So I, these are kind of the things that we feel we must do to be successful. So first of all, we have to provide a suitable and safe learning environment with the students and the staff. We have to meet all building codes, life safety codes, that sort of thing, from the federal, state, and local level. Have to meet all the state requirements for school accreditation. Inspection every few years for each school. We get involved in that process. And finally, be responsive to daily, weekly, monthly, annual changes. We get calls every single day, all day long. Margin than others. Try to be responsive to all of those. My goal in this, in developing this budget was basically to maintain what I have as far as capability. So develop a responsible budget, but also be aware, cognizant of the other aspects of running a school district that you all have to look at, such as technology. Ultimately, we're all looking to provide a safe and educationally solid learning environment for our students. My other attempt with this budget is to replace equipment that's the end of its service life. That's just an ongoing thing that I have to do. It took a little different approach than this year's presentation. In past years, I've actually listed kind of every single line and what all the budget numbers were and everything. So instead of doing that, this time around, I'm just telling you what changed for me and why they changed. You're going to hear this in every presentation, I'm sure, inflation. I mean, you go to the supermarket, you go to whatever stores you go to, Amazon, whatever, wherever you shop, and you've seen prices skyrocket. And we're not alone in that. All, the average of my supply line increases proposed were six percent as an average. That's, honestly, it's just a pass through. I'm not, we're not padding our budgets at all. This is just what we're being charged. Somebody mentioned toilet paper before and said I could talk about it all night long if I wished. We'll talk all night. But, so we were with a contractor and they kept the line, the price of our paper goods even for three straight years. That was through the pandemic, which I thought was admirable. But they finally reached a point and they decided that January 1st of this year, they weren't going to do that anymore. And so the prices went up just for paper goods 25%. That, so that's driving that 12%, that we put under John Toro Supply Line, which was one of the things that Mr. Donna highlighted earlier. He talked about security. We're, I think 2012, 2013 is when we put in the access control. And a lot of those cameras are at the end of their service life. They're failing. Our costs are going up. And that's why we asked for an increase in that line. Feel free to interrupt at any time if you have questions that come up. So equipment costs have escalated. So our, we have to pay for new equipment. But more importantly for this budget is the repair lines have been kind of decimated this year, both for the equipment repair lines and also the vehicle repair lines. Both of those budgets are already in a hole as we sit here for the year. So that's one of the areas I saw we needed to increase. And I think the administration agreed with that. As we're starting to buy through the SURF program, so that's the Capital Committee Reserve Fund that buys all our vehicles, it's not part of our budget, but it's part of the city's budget, those costs have shot right up. So where, we have cost us $35,000 for F-350, the dump body in the back, you know, 35,000, maybe five years ago. Now they're, it's over 60. So if you bought cars recently, I'm sure you've seen the same thing. The only increase in personnel, I actually asked for more, but what we've got in the budget at this point is additional custodial for Penachuck, where we truly needed, we've added about 40,000 square feet to that school. So we definitely need the cleaning ability. If you haven't been to Penachuck to see it since it's renovation, I encourage you to walk through it. It looks great. We also needed increases for our contract services line and HVAC. Again, Mr. Donna highlighted those earlier. Talk about contracted services. There are some specific things which have impacted us. Fire sprinkler inspections. We used to do them manually. We're now being asked to do them quarterly. Gym equipment inspections are required to annual ones. I haven't been fastidious about doing that, but I think we need to. It's just becoming more and more of a safety conscious environment that we're working in. Licensing. So anytime we add a camera to one of our schools or add any sort of security device, those in and of itself don't change very much, just another capability. We add enough of those things and it goes back to what they call the NVR, so the recording device. It's kind of the brains of the entire thing. If we go over a certain threshold, we have to replace that device. And then all those devices have a licensing requirement somewhere with them. So that's where the costs go up. Finally, door, overhead door inspections have increased. If you might remember, four or five years ago, the, at this high school actually, we had a overhead door come down on an instructor and she was injured. So that's, we decided we better start inspecting these overhead doors because we don't want that to occur again. HVAC maintenance, for the most part, they've stayed the same. We have some long-term contracts which you've approved for control technology and also Siemens. But Fairgrounds Middle School was completed over, basically over a year ago and was on a warranty for one year. We're now coming off that warranty. So now we have to bear the cost for those controls. Penachuck, we received our substantial completion on January 1st. And so we're covered under the warranty until next January 1st. So when the budget, I asked for six months increase there. And then we're, periodically, we have to rehab the generators. Those two, one large generator each of the two high schools. And those are important because both high schools are also an emergency shelter for the city. So it's, in addition to being a backup case, we do lose power every now and then. To answer our earlier question, most of the power outages are from outside our school. So they're the lines coming to us. So we, we have ever source on quick dial. And every time we lose power, they're given a call. We have had an issue with this school with part of our electrical systems, but we're zeroing in on that. It's kind of a shadowy thing. It happens every now and then. We're not quite sure. So we've called in the contractor to help us figure it out and hopefully it won't happen again. Major repair lines, the repairs themselves, we last fit exactly the same budget as we had last year. So this coming year, we're replacing five ventilators at Bicentennial. Actually, we're converting them to automated controls. There's a gravel area behind Broad Street Elementary, which during the renovation wasn't paved. It's right in the middle of the fire lane, so we're going to take care of that. Bleacher repairs, I mentioned doing more inspections with gym equipment. That's something they pointed out. We had some issues. And finally, we converted Bicentennial this year to a different vendor and would plan to do the same next year with Dr. Crisp. The equipment requests, actually asked for less custodial equipment this year than last. But our grounds equipment went up significantly because we have a lawnmower, it's a riding lawnmower that we do the fields and whatnot. That's 10, 12 years old and it's literally falling apart. So it's time to replace that. So the overall change in those two equipment lines is $8,000. So other than the operating funds, I mean, this is partially operating funds, so deferred maintenance. You all received a briefing on that December or maybe early January. So all these projects shouldn't be any surprises to you. Mr. Don and I presented them to the city's CIP, capital improvement program. And they are still, they haven't released their report yet on how much money we're actually going to get or how much they recommend. Capital projects, that was part of the same presentation. I'll just give you a quick overview. Many of you are involved with Joint Special and are aware of this stuff. So Fairgrounds Middle School is done. We're doing a little bit of tweaking with the HVA systems and we have a commissioning agent coming in to help us with that. Penachuck is substantially complete. As I said, on one January, that we reached that threshold, which means all the warranties start at that point. We do have some minor punch list items and some additional landscaping to do, which will be wrapped up this spring and summer. We have brand new bleachers coming for the athletic fields. Those will show up during spring break. McCarthy Middle School, it's moving on very well. It's on target, it's on time. It's, it's doing great. Franklin Street, we have to complete, we'll have it completed before the beginning of next school year. So we finished the second floor and the basement. Now we need to go back and do the third floor and first floor. But that also is going well. And finally, Burchill, Main Dustable, you're probably aware, we're going to start renovating those schools this coming summer. And that'll be a two-year process. Still on the capital improvement. These are all the projects we listed this year. So deferred maintenance, Stello Stadium update, so the turf is now 12 years old. It's time to replace it. Replace the roofs at Main D. Burchill. Unfortunately, the budget, construction budget doesn't have enough money to do that. So I put it in here. Security, we talked about security and the parts just getting old. So I put in a project for that. The Santa Life Air Filtration System, we've installed that in eight schools so far. It is part of the Main Dustable and Burchill renovation project, so it will be done in those two schools. And this project would take care of the two high schools and the rest of Fairgrounds Middle School and Penachuck. And I'm hoping, as we get a little bit further on in the middle school project, we can actually fund the rest of Fairgrounds and Penachuck and McCarthy through the construction project. But we're not far enough along financially to make that decision. But this would still cover the two high schools. The other school, other elementary schools that this doesn't cover do not have central duct systems. So we have to go back to the plugin units you see here and there. Hopefully eventually they'll have ducted systems as well. We still hope to do dehumanification of Penachuck Middle School. That didn't survive our budget process. And construction side of the house, again, we have to see how we do in the middle school project. There is a, actually, I don't think I'm spilling any beans. I shouldn't. The, the, the all number are considering a $10 million bond to add to the middle school project. So that will be enough to finish McCarthy Middle School. We're hoping there's still be some money left over. We have roughly $3 million contingency remaining for McCarthy as it is. You've all driven around this campus. You can see the pavement's starting to go. So I'm projecting for that. And then I reminded everybody that we still have other elementary schools we have to get to in the future. Talked about the SURF fund. That's the other non-operating budget that we use. And finally, we take, we take advantage of any grant programs that come along. We got some more security grants this past year, which those have to be completed by this June. And those include everything from bollards to cameras to a shooter detection system that's going to be at the new middle school. And that's in my presentation.
Anyone have any questions, any comments? Ms. Oden?
Oh, thank you. Thank you so much. Looking at other funding sources, I'm going, going down next to the last bullet. Franklin Street, work is ongoing with completion plan for the beginning of the 2023-24 school year. Is, is that more or less running on budget as to what we had thought it was going to take for that building? Or are we above what we had predicted?
We are watching our pennies very closely. It's, it's going to be very tight. Part of what we decided, it goes done, so this decision was made after the project had already started and the bonds arrived and pulled, was to develop a full kitchen capability in the school. So that's additional expense. We've actually allocated money, our deferred maintenance money this year, so we can pay for that actual installation. And then food services, actually paying for the refrigerators and stoves and that sort of thing. So that's, that's a cost that we didn't anticipate, but we seem to have it covered in other pots of money. Other than that, it's, it's going to be tight right down to the end. I mean, there's some things that are, would be nice to have, that maybe we can't do just yet. Then I would put it in my queue of things to do. For example, we've talked about doing an exterior half basketball court, kind of like we put in it. It'll be smaller than what we did at Fairgrounds Middle School, but outside basketball court, just for the kids to play at. That's on the cusp right now whether or not we can afford that.
What effect did the outside staircase that we, I didn't think we had anticipated? How much of an effect did that have on the budget?
Significant. We wouldn't be as tight a budget right now if we didn't have to do that. But it was, exactly the numbers, a couple hundred thousand dollars anyway, that we did not anticipate doing.
Did the fire department inspect that building before we purchased it?
They were, when we walked it, they were with us. And they, they thought it was in good shape. I don't think what they understood, and maybe we didn't do a good job of telling them, I don't know, don't recall. Thought that there's high school students on the third floor and preschoolers on the first and second floor. Their trepidation and our trepidation as well, in event of a, you know, a fire or something, we're going to have high schoolers running down the stairs and then kids in a way. Most of us would grab a little kid, right, and run with them. But, but you never know when a fire, people just think differently or other emergency. So I think that was probably where it all started as far as the fact that we had to build something outside for emergency evacuations, just for the high school students.
So is it my understanding then that the outside fire escape would be for the older students on the third floor and the younger students will use the interior staircase?
Correct. There's only one door to each fire escape and that's from the third floor.
Okay.
No doors in between.
Okay, thank you.
I've got a question here, and it always boggles my mind. We're taking out bonds. To put, to come to the board and need $4 million to come out of the budget versus a bond, you're already bonding it. What happened with, I guess, with Joint Special that we ran? Is it because the cost went up so high that we didn't have the money? Is it because the cost went up so high that we didn't have the money?
Talking about the middle school project?
Yeah, I'm talking about Penechak.
Oh, Penechak.
Penechak, because we're asking for, out of the budget here, for $4 million. And once you put that into the project, so it's paid for and it's done with, you're already paying this big bond. This $4 million could have been used for something else within the district that needs to be done versus taking it out of the budget.
So the main driver, was that on a particular slide that you're looking at or was that?
It's on page, slide number 13. It says install dehumidification at Penechak Middle School. Because I guess my question is, if we needed it, it should have been done when we renovated the school rather than doing it now and spending $4 million when it could have been in the bond?
I wouldn't disagree with you. I mean, we didn't, for some reason, I just don't recall why, we did not put dehumidification in the project at the beginning. It never was in the project. And it was decided after the fact that for equity purposes, since the new middle school's going to be, have air conditioning, Fairgrounds has air conditioning, then Penechak should. Penechak does in some cases, the media center does have air conditioning, the main offices, I think guidance spaces, computer labs, and a couple other spaces in the school do have air conditioning. But this would provide the same level of air treatment as the other two middle schools. So they felt it was an equity issue and it should be addressed. We're hoping, again, that some of that can be done by the middle school project. And I take care of the numbers for the most part. And I'm pretty confident that that $4 million may drop significantly. Or we may just choose to do the new classroom wings and the internal classes. The $4 million also includes the tech ed spaces, the gymnasium, the cafeteria, and other places like that.
Well, I-
Betting man, that number's going to come down.
I guess my concern is, because some of us are ending our four-year term here. We're in the last year of the four-year term. And I remember coming on the board, I remember back when I was on board in 2000, the same deferred maintenance, same, you got to ask the capital improvement committee. And chances are, they're going to give you zero to none or very little because the city has other projects. But if you know that we have $14 million worth of projects, there's $4 million sitting right there that could be used on projects that we need done versus taking it out of our budget now rather than, I guess my question is, or my comments, it's a little bit of poor planning, that this should have been in the bond. You know, it's pay me now, pay me later, but I'd rather, I'm going to pay the bond. And I could have used this money elsewhere within the district. I'm very happy that we're going to get more of the Santa Life Air Filtration because I think hopefully this is going to, it's working good. And I'm glad that this is something that the board has rallied around. And I remember when Mr. Claffey got on the, last year, on the finance and ops, and he was so concerned that not every school was going to have the same type of equipment. But I'm glad to see that we're getting some money for that this year. My other concern was, and again, we didn't have the money for this, and I understand with the project, $5.8 million. So again, we're taking it out of the operating budget because we made sure that when we funded the renovation, we did it with ESER funds, I believe, and some of bonding.
Well, 50/50, yes.
50/50. But we still have a project of $5.8 million for a roof on both of them. Am I correct?
That would be the total, that's a high number because there's a number we looked at. If we're going to add solar on our roofs, that would require a lot more steel reinforcement. If we were to bring the insulation underneath the rubber membrane up to current code, that's more weight, that means we need more steel to support it. One option we're actually looking at in the project is not doing any of that, just replacing the membrane and replace the insulation where it's gone bad because sometimes it does get leaks and the foam can go bad underneath it. That number's going to be closer to 1.1 million, not the 5.8. You said one thing that I, hopefully, you know, I misled you in how I presented this. Most of those projects, with the exception of deferred maintenance projects, all those other projects would be bonded. So it's not coming out of operating funds.
So this is all going to be bonded?
Correct.
It's all going to be bonded?
Except for the deferred maintenance projects.
A 10-year bond, 20-year bond, 30-year bond? Do you know?
Depends on the life of the system that you're replacing.
It's going to be very interesting with, let's say, the Santa Life Filtration System, how many years you can bond that for. Because what's the life of the system? Because I'm the one, when they wanted to bond the roads, said, if my road only lasts me five years and I bond it for 10 years, somehow it's costing me money because at the end of five years, I've got to repave it, but I still have five years left on my bond. And believe me, I'm not a mathematician at all. I don't even like math. But common sense says there's some things you bond and some things you don't bond. I mean, if you were going to do some of this, like the roofs, let's go into ways again, the dehumidification, if you're already doing the renovation, and if you're going to bond it here, probably would have been better off in the school project that way. Because now you're going to have to roll all this into one bond again. The city's going to probably have to do and sell it. And the question is, selling it now versus if you had put that into the school project and they sold the bond, what's your interest rate now versus your interest rate maybe two, three years ago? And the cost factor? So how much more is it going to cost you now than it did two, three years ago? Because interest rates, you bought a house two, three years ago, the interest rate was 2% to 3%. Now they're 6% to 7%. So you're getting, it's costing you more all around. Am I correct, Mr. Donovan? Being I'm not a mathematician here.
Yes, no, interest rates have increased, tripled in the last year or so.
Thank you. Thank you, that's all I have to say.
Ms. Lampia?
I just had a question, just because there's no figures here, and I didn't know if they're somewhere else. But I didn't know like what, how much your budget has gone up, like not with these, not with the deferred maintenance and not with the extra projects, but just with the custodial, like the paper and the inflation and everything, like how much of your basic cost gone up?
I can tell you, when I put in my original request, it totaled 13%.
Right, thank you.
It was for all the supply lines, equipment lines, contracted services, HVAC, maintenance, all, everything came to about 13%. We reduced that somewhat before we got here tonight.
Yeah.
But it's still double figures.
Is that typical? Like, I don't remember what it was last year, do you know?
Oh, no, no. It's-
It's by far the largest increase since I've been here.
Is it the largest increase in the budget altogether or?
No, just in plant operations.
Okay. All right, wow, that's a lot of sticker shock, but thank you. And thanks for the presentation, it was good.
Ms. Oden?
Thank you. I do have one more question. I don't know if anybody has looked at the budget this way, but how much in this budget is covered by ESER funds or what percentage of the budget?
None of the items in this budget are in ESER.
None? Okay.
But ESER has 30 or so employees in it. It has some of our programs that we put in place during the COVID time. So there's significant spending taking place in ESER that after this budget is going to have to be moved or eliminated. That will be next year's budget.
So they'll-
Be off the board by then, so you have to worry about it.
I still worry about it. I care about this district, but, no, maybe I shouldn't ask the question. I won't be here, but, no, I'm just wondering, that's going to have quite an effect on the budget and the district.
Yes, in speaking with superintendent, you know, we're going to have to start looking at the budget earlier next year because we really have to take a look at, for example, there's a couple of programs we've put in place for mental health and for suspended students and things like that. Do we want to keep that going? ESER's paying for those funds. If we are, can we do it more efficiently? Can we do it cheaper? Can we do it another way? So there's things like that. And then all this staffing that we brought on, we're not going to be able to keep it all. But to be honest with you personally, if our numbers keep going down in students, why do we need all those other people? Some of those people were put in place because of COVID, because, and we're pretty much back to normal at this point, so maybe we don't need all those positions. But, and you really have to look at them one by one. It's hard just to throw a blanket on it.
Okay. Thank you. And to the people that put this together, thank you. This is a lot easier to read and to carry. That 10-pound budget book we used to carry around was tough, but I liked the way this was much more concise and easier to read and to follow. So thank you for your work on this. I think you did a really nice job. Thank you.
Thank you. For the next budget meeting, are we going to be getting the information the day of or are we going to be getting it like on our Friday packets?
You probably will not get it Friday, but you will get it prior to. So you'll probably get it Monday or Tuesday, but it's not going to be all done Friday for next Wednesday, no.
Okay. Okay. Does anybody have any more questions? Anymore? Nothing? Okay. So I guess, is there a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. We're adjourned at 8:09. Thank you, everybody.